Good evening and welcome to the special budget meeting of September 18th, 2019 at 5:30. We have a quorum. I'll call this meeting to order. Clerk, please read the procedures for speaking on an item.
Individuals wishing to speak on agenda items must complete a sign-up card and present it to the clerk prior to the item being introduced. Sign-up cards are available on the table in the council chamber. Comments made under public comment must relate directly to the agenda items. No sign-up card is required. Citizens will be given three minutes to speak on all items.
Thank you, Clerk. Is there anybody that would like to say an invocation? Not seeing any, please join me in a moment of silent meditation. Please join me in the pledge of the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Mr. City Manager?
Yes, sir. This is the final public hearing on the city's proposed budget for FY 2020. What will happen tonight is we will read the related ordinances to adopt a final operating and voted debt service millage rate. We'll adopt our final operating enterprise and capital budgets, and we'll conduct our final reading of the resolutions and ordinances proposing the fiscal year 2020 water, sewer, and solid waste rates. City Attorney will read the ordinances, and then we have staff available for a quick presentation prior to council's deliberations.
Yes, our first ordinance is ordinance number 31-2019, an ordinance of the City of Titusville, Florida, providing for the millage for the operation of the City of Titusville, and voted debt service levy for fiscal year 2020 and providing for an effective date. Ordinance number 32-2019, an ordinance of the City of Titusville, Florida, adopting the general and related budgets of the City of Titusville for the fiscal year 2020 and providing for an effective date. Resolution number 47-2019, a resolution of the City of Titusville, Florida, amending the schedule of fees for water and sewer service by increasing the charges and rates and providing for an effective date. Ordinance number 33-2019, an ordinance of the City of Titusville, Florida, amending Sections 16, 116 of the Code of Ordinances by amending and establishing an increase to the residential monthly charge for solid waste and recycling fees, and by amending Sections 16, 117 of the Code of Ordinances by amending and establishing an increase to the commercial dumpster and commercial can monthly charges for solid waste and recycling fees, and increasing the commercial dumpster rental fees and providing for an effective date. Ordinance number 34-2019, an ordinance of the City of Titusville, Florida, adopting the Enterprise Fund and Capital Improvement Program budgets of the City of Titusville for the fiscal year 2020 and providing for an effective date.
Thank you, sir.
And we have our Finance Director, Bridget Clements, and our Assistant City Manager, Tom Abate, with the presentation for council.
Okay. And this is just a quick review of the budgeting process. Y'all have seen this slide a few times. The proposed budget is at 7.7210 mils, and we are working tonight with a tentatively approved millage rate of 8.2443. And these are the ordinances that you'll be voting on tonight, and the City Manager, I mean, the City Attorney just read them. And then this is the Florida statutes that explain the process that the City Manager just explained to y'all. The next slide is just a review of our strategic plans, our goals and objectives for FY 2020, which you all approved earlier in the budgeting process. And this is just a reminder that across all city funds, the expenditure budget we're looking at approving is roughly $123 million. That encompasses all the city funds. And the general fund portion of that is about $48 million, most of which is going to public safety. This is just a little reminder of the millage rate. The proposed millage rate is built 3.01% above the rollback rate, and it yields an additional $462,000. During this public hearing, we will discuss how we are proposing to use those dollars. Additionally, the tentative millage rate of 8.2443, which is 10% above rollback, it yields an additional million dollars, which provides you all flexibility as we go through this final hearing, if you choose to raise the millage. And then, as we presented at the last week at the budget hearing, here are the way we are proposing to spend the $462,000 above rollback in the proposed budget, and it's all on things related to public safety. This is the millage rate comparison chart between comparing us to a lot of the other major, you know, the cities in the county and the county, and it's sorted on proposed. So, as you can see again in here, we're, if you just look at the millage rate, we're the third highest. But if you go to the next slide, which breaks it down to the per capita, we're amongst the third lowest in the county when it comes to the per capita of the LORM tax rate. These next three slides just show you the typical House bill for a residential home in the City of Titusville. This first one is based on the current, or the proposed millage rate of 7.7210 mils, and you can see that the City of Titusville's percentage of that is about 37%. The next one is based on the current, the current 2019 tax rate of 7.9517, and the city's percentage is about 37, a little over 37%. And the last one is the highest millage rate you could adopt, which is 10% above rollback, and there we go up to 38%. The rest of the costs are on the tax bill, are on the county's side of the tax bill, not the city's. These are items that at the first public hearing you all approved. These are all the items we wanted to include in the budget that are not related to any increase in add-the-LORM rate, and at the last public hearing you guys did approve these. And then these are some of the additional considerations that we showed you all at the last public hearing as well. These are things that are funded out of the state revenues. These are also approved. And then these are the additional funding considerations that we were requested to provide that would bring us up to our current millage rate, and this was the order of priority for the city, for general fund. And these are the same, these are the same items that, for general fund, but these are their impacts to the other funds in the city. These are all the enterprise funds and then the other governmental funds. So if you approved a half a percent pay increase for general fund, you can see the impact for the other funds, because you can't do one without the other. And then that's the rest of that list. And then this is just a little reminder from the budget workshop with the utility rate changes. So this is the impact on the storm, the stormwater bill and the solid waste bill. So they're proposing 2% increase and 2.5% increase to recycling. And then this is just a comparison of our city compared to others, and we're right in the middle of the pack with our rates. And then it's kind of the same thing with regard to the single-family rates for solid waste. We're pretty much in the middle. And we're at the low end when it comes to the solid waste rates. This is just a highlight of our priorities for the 2020 budget, and we've been over these several times. But basically, the city is continuing its efforts to improve processes, invest in employees, and make any kind of adjustments we just see deemed necessary to be competitive in the workplace. I don't know how that slide got stuck there, but that wasn't the right place. But, so now we're going to go back to the rates. This is, again, a recap from the budget workshop. The water rates for this size meter, you're looking at a monthly proposed increase of 83 cents a month for this size meter. And for a commercial, it's just over a dollar a month at the proposed rates. And this, and then this one has a $7.26 monthly increase. And that, this stuff was all, we reviewed thoroughly during the budget workshop in August. Here's the rate comparison for the Water Department. If you can see, the City of Titusville is right there in the middle again with our current rates and our proposed rates. And this brings us to action items. So tonight, what we're going to be asking council to do is, right now, we have an approved tentative millage rate. You all need to consider how you want to adjust the final millage rate, if you do at all, and you can either raise the millage rate over what's proposed, or you can fund it through some other means. And the City Attorney's already read the budget ordinances and resolutions, so the next steps are to open the hearing and then amend the budget if deemed necessary. And these are what you're voting on.
Okay. Do we go to the cards on these, each item?
You'll need to open the public hearing, sir, and then go to the chip.
I'll open the public hearing. Are there any cards on the first item?
Is it Trenton? He's requested to speak on the budget.
Right up, sir. Name and address, sir.
My name is Trenton Massfield. I live at 1585 Pennax Avenue. I'm against raising any millage.
You have three minutes to speak.
Okay, without being interrupted? Okay. I'm against the millage rate of being raised in the city. I believe there's other ways to raise the, raise... I'm against the millage rate of being raised in the city. My question is, is every department in the city, are they, are they being accounted for every dollar that is being spent amongst their, amongst their department? And as the resident of the City of Titusville, my question is, why are we the third highest in the county? Why can't we lead the county instead of leading the county and being the highest amongst the county? We don't get taxed by per capita in the county. We get taxed by the household in the county. We don't get taxed by how many people live in my house. We get taxed by the thousands of dollars my house is worth amongst the county. So, instead of raising taxes, why don't we lead the, lead the county and saying, "We're the lowest taxes." Why don't we be like Cape Canaveral? That's the only, only city within the county that has lowered taxes, that has proposed to lower taxes in their city. But that's just my, my question to you guys is, y'all are the representatives for the city. Why can't we be the city that, that lowers taxes amongst the citizens? And, and go with the rollback rate? Because what you're doing is you're essentially raising taxes on the citizens, because housing has also gone up. It's gone up 7% to 20% across the city. I'm originally from Lake County, and theirs has gone up too. People say SpaceX and the Space Center. Well, that's not only thing that, I mean, it's going up across the country. The housing has gone up, so the taxes are also going to go up? So it's not like the revenue's not going to go up amongst the city. It's, it's going to go up regardless, whether you go with the rollback or not, because it's because of inflation, so, of the, of the houses. So I just want to let y'all know that I'm against raising taxes. I understand I'm only one person, I'm 45,000, but I guess I'm the only one person amongst 45,000 that's willing to come up here and say that I'm against raising taxes in the City of Titusville. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Bridget, would you like to explain the relationship between the cost of housing and the millage rate?
Well, what I was going to say is, if you look at the two slides that we prepared, there is a direct inverse relationship between the population and the city and the millage rate. And so, when you, when you look at it across the county, so those places that have a smaller population tend to have a lower millage rate, and I don't know if it's because their geography's smaller or what it is, but across all of, you know, when you look at, that's why we look at per capita, because you have to account for a greater geographical area. So if you take these two slides, you'll see a direct inverse relationship between the two. And I think that when it comes to, he's right in the sense that we are, we are, we put a budget on the table that's a 3% increase over rollback, but we've stated very clearly the priorities that we're funding, which is public safety, because our, our city's growing. And so I think it comes down to, you know, your decision as council people as to what's the best investment for those dollars. But to address the millage rate, I think there is, there is a definite relationship between the size of your, the geography and, and, you know, the population versus the millage rate. And that's why the per capita number, I think, is more applicable.
Additionally, some of the lower-millage cities are not full-service cities. We provide every range from public works, parks, recreation, stormwater, all, we're a full-service city. Where West Melbourne and some other cities with lower millage are in full service, and it costs money to, to provide those services. And so an absolute metric of the millage rate is not a fair comparison. It is per capita. That's what really matters. It's providing that service to each citizen in the city, and we are among the lowest. So I think we get a good bang for the buck for our citizens.
Just as far as your comments are, I hope you understood what she, what they were saying. But it's a reverse proportion between the add-the-LORM rate and the property value. In other words, we have a higher rate than other cities because we have a lower value of our house, of our properties. So we may raise the same amount or similar, or even lower than, than some. But that's, that's why this looks high, but this is low, so it comes out in between, no matter where you are. I, I, you'd have to go and...
You don't have to go to the line, I will.
It's not necessary, sir. I just want to make sure you...
We don't live in a higher-gated community. We get taxed more to bring it to the center.
I'm not trying to argue with you, sir. I'm trying to explain it to you.
I understand. I totally understand.
Okay. Member Nelson, you're up.
And I was just going to add, I agree with Mr. Abadi. Yeah, I look at Cape Canaveral, and we pave six miles of roads each year, and we're behind. And I look at Cape Canaveral, and in 10 years, they can probably pave the whole city, you know? And we have people up here saying, "Our roads stink. We need this. We need that." And as council people, I think our job is to listen to everybody and try to make it as fair as possible. I won't say it's always absolutely fair, but we do the best we can in trying to make it fair for everybody.
I think the point on the roads was, if you have a small city, you don't have a lot of roads. We have a very large city, and we have a lot of roads that have to be done so much each year to, in order to, over cycles, do all of them. Anyone else like to... Okay, I see no further comments. Any other cards on this?
No, sir.
Okay. Do you have a card, sir?
No, sir. We don't have a card.
Sir? Be my guest. Try, try and come in a little earlier though, sir, so you can do it before the meeting.
Stan Johnson, 860 Point State Avenue. As you are aware, is that I'm concerned with the decisions that this council is making and the decision-making process for budgeting requirements. And I have had issues about, for example, the well field, and that I have expressed my concern is that it appears that there's been mismanagement, and it has been over-pumping of some wells. And our well field that has been our original well field, that was six gallon, 6 million gallons per day, is down to 3 million, 3 million gallons per day. And so that's a big expense, and we also have had over $10 million of infrastructure for the well field that is south of 50 and north of State Route 405. And it's, it's even been in a resting condition, so we have, we have a problem there also. So there's a lot of money that needs to be looked at as what's going on. And to this end is that I have, I have created a poster that you've seen before, that I have in my hand. It has to do with the, how well you're making decisions. And in this particular poster, I have, I have something that you probably haven't noticed. It has down here, something that my mother had told me a number of times, it says 7/6, or 7:6. And that stands for someone about 2,000 years ago expressed that, that, "Don't throw your pearls to the pigs." And in this case, is I'm concerned about whether you're making decisions that are, let's say, without, with rigorous honesty. Because, as you know, is that I've had a number of statements made about me, which I have identified as, as fraud. So I'm asking you to be especially considerate of what you're doing and the truth value of your decisions in the, in this budgeting process and in your other decisions. Thank you.
Next, next item? Go to the next one?
So I think you want to have council deliberation. There's no more cards, so...
Okay. Do the votes on these then? Huh? Oh, okay. I'm sorry. Let's go. You go right ahead. I'm trying.
We need to talk. I am okay with the proposed 7.7210. I am concerned, and I would like us to consider doing a couple of additional things. And I re, I understand that we'll raise the taxes a little bit, but I'm looking at security guard for City Hall, security audit. I'm not sure if the media specialist is included in this budget.
It is, and also those two items are at no expense to millage rates.
So if you look on page, slide 17, that's where the additional funding considerations are that are directly related to raising the millage rate. The other ones you all had approved to be funded out of the state revenue.
Okay, so we're okay there. So the only thing that I would ask us to consider is maybe the arborist or forestry person, at least on a part-time basis, maybe not on a full-time basis, but a part-time basis. My understanding is what that person will do for us is basically they will look at the city as a whole and help us determine how to make the city move forward, where we have canopy for our city, and hopefully a lower temperature. And it will also help the wildlife, protect the wildlife within the city. So that would be my, my only request then.
Member Jordan?
Hi. Actually, my biggest concern, and you already have it on there, was the increase in pay for the employees, because I think that's really, really important. I am going to go against what my friend is saying about the arborists. I don't think that's something that's necessary right now. I don't get it, to be honest with you. I just don't get it. We're doing, we're doing some things, yeah, I know. Maybe I'm slow. But we're, we're doing some things with, you know, tree ordinance and all that good stuff, and I just don't see where we need to spend the money on a part-time or full-time arborist. And I think we've actually taken care of, you know, everything else that you were looking at, which I was focused on also, especially the, the security for City Hall, which I think is real important. So I'm good with where we are, to be honest with you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Member Stokel?
Make sure I push the right button. I'm with Member Jordan. I think we're, I like the budget as it is. And to your point, Member Nelson, I will say, for, from some of my meetings being held at City Hall, there are some things that they're doing right now, I think, that are addressing some of those concerns, where people are getting certifications and some training in it in the meantime. So maybe that will make you feel a little bit better. It made me feel a little better.
Vice Mayor?
Yeah, I'm in the same tone as I was at last week's meeting. I'm pleased with the budget. The effort's been tremendous. I think you've hit everything we need to hit at the same time, being conservative, holding the line. We're not spending anything lucrative here. I think that Assistant City Manager, I think your comment that needs to be out there when you look at these graphs and charts is we're a full-service city. You know, if you're down in Cape Canaveral, you're not paying the police department. You're not doing the thing. You've got not even, not even a quarter of the roads that we've got. So it gets a little frustrating sometimes when we tighten our belt so tight, but yet we are going to always have someone that says you're doing, you know, you're being too, too loose. We had someone last week talk about our water increase. And when he broke it down, it was 83 cents a month per household. You got to pay for a few things, and less than a dollar is not bad. Very proud of this. I think you're looking for it as well. The small raise and the security to City Hall are big things to me. And we've talked over and over about the, you know, police department... And we've talked over and over about the, you know, police department coming up with its, you know, personnel. I think City Manager and Police Chief and everybody involved, because I'm sure there's somebody, have done a great job remedying that shortage, and we're looking down the future to a Southern Fire Department that we're going to need as people come to our city. So overall, I'm very pleased where we're at. You've been, you know, safe, secure, conservative, yet looking forward, and I appreciate that.
Member Jordan?
Press the button. There you go. One of the things that I think we all agreed on was the facilities at Public Works. Are we not addressing that at all?
Yeah, we spoke at that, the hearing that you were absent from.
I was absent from. Wow. I feel very small right now.
But we can have Kevin come up and readdress if you want, Councilmember Jordan.
Please, Kevin.
Sure. What we shared at last meeting was, we have done some improvements, tearing down some pieces, putting some pieces together, and we have put aside some fleet and solid waste money over the last couple of years for new wash racks, some other buildings. We do, in the capital plan, have needs, 4-plus million still in the plan. If you take a look at the long-term plan, they're there, waiting to be done. So we do still have needs, they'll be there. So anything that's put that way helps us, but we have made some improvements to the facility. As City Manager shared before, most of our staff is mobile. They don't actually reside there, so our biggest ticket is our garage, which is around 4 million by itself. So, but the bulk of our staff is mobile field staff, so they're out. And we're looking at modular buildings and things that we're efforting towards, so...
Okay. All right. Any further discussion on these? This? City Attorney?
Yes, Sir. Mr. Clemens, can I just clarify for the public and for council, what the rollback rate is, the percentage increase over rollback rate and the millage rate to be levied, based on the presentation tonight?
You got to find the actual rollback rate. Give me a minute. Okay. So the rollback rate is 7.4951, and the proposed budget, is that what you're asking, Richard?
The rollback rate, you said 7.4951?
Mm-hmm.
And what's the percentage of increase over the rollback rate based, and the millage?
The proposed millage is 7.7210, and that's 3.01% above the rollback rate.
Okay, and the voted debt millage is .3463 mils?
Yes.
See a light on? Yes, ma'am? Yes, go right ahead.
So I'd move to approve ordinance number 31-2019, providing for the millage for the operation of the city of Titusville at the amount of 7.7210 mils, and the vote, voted debt service levy for 2020 at .3463. I believe I have that right.
And I just want to clarify in that motion, that that's 3.01% above the rollback rate of 7.4951 mil.
Correct.
I have a motion, I have a second.
Second.
Second, by Member Jordan. We, any further discussion? You still have a light on? Is that previous?
Yes, previous.
Okay. And roll call vote, please, clerk?
Member Jordan?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Passes unanimously. Next item? We have any cards on the next?
Next, we'll need a motion on ordinance 32-2019 to adopt the budget. Which is the general and related budgets of the city of Titusville for the fiscal year 2020.
I'd move to, sorry.
Yes, go ahead.
Move to adopt ordinance number 32-2019, adopting the general and related budgets of the city of Titusville for the year 2020.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, roll call vote, please, clerk?
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Jordan?
Yes.
Yes. Passes unanimously. Next item?
You go ahead.
Okay. Move to approve resolution number 47-2019, amending the schedule of fees for water and sewer service by increasing the charges and rates.
Before we do that, I'd like to open a public hearing. We have to vote on each of these separately, so we'll have a public hearing on resolution 47-2019. We'll then open a public hearing on ordinance 33 and 34. We'll do each of those separately, public hearings and voting.
Okay.
So I'd suggest we open the public hearing first on resolution 47-2019.
I'll open the public hearing. Are there any cards on this item?
Yes, sir.
I'll close the public hearing. I were...
Move to approve resolution number 47-2019, amending the schedule of fees for water and sewer service by increasing the charges and rates.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please, clerk?
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Jordan?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Okay. Next item is, yeah, 33?
Yeah, open the public hearing.
Say again?
Got to open the public hearing.
I still didn't hear, open to the public, yes. I'll open the public meeting.
No cards.
No cards on that. Close the public meeting. What's your pleasure?
I'd move to adopt ordinance number 33-2019.
I have a motion and I have a second.
Second.
I have a motion and a second from Member Stokel. Any further discussion? All those, I'm sorry, roll call vote?
Vice Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Jordan?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes. Passes unanimously. Next item, I'll open the public hearing. Any, any cards on this?
Yes, sir.
No cards on that, or close the public hearing. What's your pleasure? Oh, we got Member Jordan.
I was just going to make the motion before she...
Go right ahead.
Thank you so much. Move to adopt ordinance number 34-2019, adopting the enterprise funds and capital improvement programs of the city of Titusville for the fiscal year 2020.
I have a motion, I have a second. The motion is second from the Vice Mayor. Close the public hearing, roll call vote.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Jordan?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Further public comment? I see none. Any further discussion from council?
And we have one card for public comment.
Oh, you do? Okay. Okay. Anyone, no other cards or any public want to speak? Okay. See nothing else that has to be done, so I'll declare this meeting adjourned.